Lord, we thank you that you've given us life, that you've allowed us to be able to move and have our beings. And we are so grateful and thankful that you do that because you are an awesome God. And Lord, I thank you for this opportunity that you've given to Council and myself and the people that are here and the people that are watching. Because God, what we all have in common is that we want what's best for our community. For Phoenix City, Alabama, as we call a positive place to live. And Lord, I ask that you continue to not only give this council and this team calibration, but Lord, to give our community the calibration that we all must know that for us to get to where we need to get as a community, it's going to take all of us. It's going to take all of us with love, sincerity, and Lord, mostly because of you. And Lord, we just thank you for that. We ask, Lord, that you bless each and every one that is here. And Lord, that we all reflect and be grateful that you sent your son to, for us to have a second and third and fourth chance. And Lord, this is the time of year because of that, that we're able to celebrate. We're able to connect with our loved ones. We're able to connect with our community. We ask that you continue to guide us and lead us with the pureness of heart, that everything we do bring you praise and glory. In your son's name we pray, Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
If we could face the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all so much. We appreciate everyone being here. As I always say, it's always a blessing to be, to see each other and always it's a blessing to see back. So we thank you all for this, for being here. With that, at this time, I'd like to call, uh, is Assistant Chief Stoddinger here? Are you gonna? Oh, he, he must not ate his Wheaties this morning, as we asked. At this time, we have an employee service recognition for Captain Joseph Wirey of Phoenix City Police Department. And at this time, we have a presentation by Chief Smith. Something that is so, uh, great and outstanding for one of our honor to be able to achieve such honor. Chief Smith?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, I want to present to you Captain Joseph Wirey. Joseph Wirey was recently graduated from FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He is only the fifth officer in the history of the Phoenix City Police Department, to my knowledge, that has graduated from the FBI Academy. To give you some idea of what the FBI Academy is, a lot of people think, well, if you go to the FBI Academy, then that makes you an FBI agent. But that's not exactly what it's for. The FBI Academy was created in nineteen thirty-five. And since its creation, there's only been about fifty-three thousand law enforcement officers throughout the country and throughout the world, for that matter, that have attended that prestigious academy. The academy was set up specifically by the FBI to train local and state and other federal law enforcement agencies in the best practices of law enforcement in the United States. Agencies from all over the country petition to go, they have to be nominated, they have to be selected. In our particular case, Captain Wirey waited about three years to be selected and actually get a spot to go to the FBI Academy. And currently in the police department, only myself, Chief Stoddinger, and now Captain Wirey, although there are only three graduates from the academy. To put things in perspective, there's about nine-hundred thousand local law enforcement, local state and federal law enforcement officers in the United States that work on a, on a continuous basis and still working in law enforcement. From Joey's graduation, he is one of only about sixteen thousand. So you put that in perspective, sixteen thousand officers are current active members of law enforcement that were graduates from the FBI Academy. It's a very, very unique and prestigious and hard to get in. And, and, and just so you know, the, the way this works is that when you go to the FBI Academy, you're not learning basic law enforcement. Basic law enforcement is taught at the local police academy, and that's what they call minimum standards. This is much higher than that minimum standard. He has, he's obtained basically the pinnacle of law enforcement credential in the United States. It's, uh, credited by the University of Virginia. He received university credit for volunteering at this university. He also has now been trained in management personnel, investigative techniques, budgeting and processing, anything that you can think of that a law enforcement agency has to do. He has now been trained to do all of those facets of law enforcement. And not just do them to Phoenix City standards, but to national standards. Uh, many times I tell people all the time, law enforcement is one of those professions that really doesn't change. You think, well, being a cop in New York is different than being a police in Phoenix City. It's really not. The Fourth Amendment is the Fourth Amendment, no matter where you're at. First Amendment is the First Amendment, no matter where you're at. Fifth, Sixth, all, all those amendments, those are the Constitution. That protecting those rights of our citizens is not unique to just one jurisdiction. Um, and that's what's so important about the FBI Academy, being able to standardize that profession throughout the country. The other thing that the FBI Academy does, of course, he went to, the Academy has two-hundred-and-fifty other students. They have four of them here, and two-hundred-and-fifty students in these classes, roughly two-hundred-and-fifty students in these classes. So you know, there's only a few people that graduate each year. The contacts that he's made there are the contacts that he'll now utilize throughout the rest of his career. Contacts that I obtained in two thousand and six, or the people I pick up the phone and call today to try to help get problems solved, whether it be a crime, whether it be a, a personnel issue, whether it be a hiring issue. It doesn't matter. If it has anything to do with law enforcement, then I've got those two-hundred-and-fifty other officers. And now that he'll be joining the FBI National Academy graduates, uh, then he'll have sixteen thousand other officers who are doing training to be able to solve problems at the, at the local level, as well as getting cooperation throughout other agencies, all the way up through the FBI and down to the local sheriff. So we'll turn the time over to Captain Wirey to say a few words, talk a little bit about his experience. And again, I just want him to, you know, take time to take note and, and tell you how proud I am of him graduating. We have another application that's, that's currently in the, uh, in the system from another officer that hopefully will be able to get accepted. But we'll project that when we get there, obviously, again, it takes a long time and a lot of, uh, a lot of pressure and pride and, and, I want to say politics, but it takes a little bit of politics too, calling up there and talking to the FBI agents and working with them to make sure that we can get our personnel into that academy. So with that said, Mr. Smith, Captain Wirey?
Captain Wirey, do you prefer Joseph or Joey? I heard Chief say Joey.
I go by Joey.
Joey, okay.
So first, I just want to thank Chief Smith and, um, city manager, allowing me to attend ten, ten weeks. So, no part of the family, but two young daughters, but it was a truly unique experience. Uh, got to meet law enforcement leaders from across the country, across the world, for that matter. We had twenty-five different countries represented. I know those contacts are going to be invaluable to me, invaluable to me in the future. Um, the leadership skills that I learned, I know will benefit the city, and I look forward to coming back and finally to learn. It was a great experience and I appreciate the opportunity.
Congratulations. Thank you. It's a huge honor. Thanks for sucking it up. Uh, Councilman Gordon and I were just over here talking about the situation where you have to suck up. So you sucked it up and you got past it. So kudos to you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it so much. Uh, continuing on, Council on the City Clerk. At this time, I'd like to call on Mrs. Lee for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting, meetings for the December the fifth work session, as well as December the sixth council meeting. So at this time, Counsel, at your pleasure, I'd like to ask for, uh, we take this together in one vote. So with that said, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Counsel on the Senate. Counsel, at this time, I'd like to ask the Counsel, is there any unfinished business that, for discussion? Okay, there not being any, we will proceed with the resolutions. First one on the building, uh, department. Is a resolution in reference to rescinding Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-two dash one fifty-nine in reference to declaring a structure located at seven oh eight Williams Avenue as a public nuisance and authorizing the necessary action to bid, demolish, remove and clear all building materials, trash, debris from said premises with all costs being paid using the Community Development Block Grant, also known as the CDBG grant for funding. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that Resolution Twenty Twenty-two dash one fifty-nine adopted August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, allowing the demolition and inspection services contractor to bid, demolish, remove and clear seven oh eight Williams Avenue using the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, excuse me, is hereby rescinded, passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there a second, Councilman Bailey?
Bailey.
We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
We have the motion and the second. Any comments, questions or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Thank you, Counsel. Proceeding on, Counsel on the Building Departments. We have a resolution in reference to declaring properties a public nuisance and authorizing and directing the Housing Abatement Board to take necessary action to demolish, remove and clear all building materials, trash and debris from the following properties. Seven oh eight Williams Avenue, twenty-one fourteen Somerville Road, twelve oh five Second Street South. Counsel, at this time, I will ask the clerk to read one master resolution, and we will take all those property as one motion and one vote. Okay? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City has declared three properties located within Phoenix City, Alabama, to be a public nuisance in accordance with Alabama State Law, Section eleven fifty-three A one. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the Housing Abatement Board is hereby authorized and directed to take the necessary action to demolish, remove and clear all building materials, trash and debris from each property and to have the lots cleared at the following locations in Phoenix City, Alabama. Seven oh eight Williams Avenue, twenty-one fourteen Somerville Road, twelve oh five Second Street South. Be it further resolved that the cost of the demolition by the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, shall be assessed against the property taxes. Passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, all of us have heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments, questions, discussion? Okay. If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Counsel, proceeding on, on the Economic Development and Planning Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a contract and accept an offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church for the purchase of one twelve South Seal Road in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has surplus property that they no longer need. And whereas this property is located at one twelve South Seal Road. And whereas the parcel number for the property is fifty-seven oh five oh five twenty-two four zero twenty-two zero twenty-six point zero zero zero. And whereas the city has received an offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church to purchase this property for twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And whereas the city accepts the offer and agrees to sell the property for the above referenced price of twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church for the purchase of one twelve South Seal Road in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars as outlined above, and does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all documents necessary to finalize the purchase of said property. Passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, may I?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Abstain. Okay. Proceeding on, Counsel, on the Economic Development and Planning Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign a contract and accept an offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church for the purchase of parcel number five seven zero five zero five two two four zero two two zero two nine point zero 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 in an amount not to exceed six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has surplus property that they no longer need. And whereas the parcel number for the property is fifty-seven oh five oh five twenty-two four zero twenty-two zero twenty-nine point zero zero zero. And whereas the city has received an offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church to purchase this property for six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And whereas the city accepts the offer and agrees to sell the property for the above referenced price of six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that do hereby accept the offer from Greater Mount Zion Baptist Church for the purchase of the above referenced property in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars as outlined above, and does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign all necessary documents to finalize the purchase of said property. Passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Again, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, all of us have heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion from Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Abstain. Okay, thank you, Counsel. Proceeding on, on the Engineering Department. We have a resolution in reference to granting easement to Alabama Power Company to provide electrical service for Fifty Downing Drive. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Police Department has placed an office trailer at the Training Center located at Fifty Downing Drive, which will require electrical power. And whereas Alabama Power Company is requesting that the City of Phoenix City grant an easement to provide underground power for the facility. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the necessary documents to authorize the granting of said easement. Passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the Counsel for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second it.
Motion, Councilman Day, and second, Councilwoman Johnson. We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any comments or discussion? Okay, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, Counsel, proceeding on, on the Police Department. Is a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor, city manager and chief of police, public safety director to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to install and configure a Mark Alert Fire Station Alerting and Automation System in an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and Motorola Solutions desire to enter into a service agreement to install and configure a Mark Alert Fire Station Alerting and Automation System for the fire department. And whereas the contract amount will be in an amount not to exceed four hundred, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, twenty-five cent. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city managers, authorizing officials, and Raymond J. Smith as chief of police, public safety director, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the service agreement with Motorola Solutions. Passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. That Mark Alert is a tongue twister and...
It is.
You did good.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've heard the, uh, resolution from our clerk. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. Uh, is that a second, Councilman?
Yes.
Johnson, woman, woman Johnson? You've been called worse.
Yeah, sure.
We all have. Any comments, questions or discussion?
Yes, uh, Mayor, we'd like for the chief to elaborate for the city of Phoenix City on that project, please.
All right. Chief, did you eat your Wheaties this morning?
Yes, sir. Uh, this, uh, Mark Alert system is an upgrade to our P twenty-five radio system. Uh, currently, right now, as we discussed yesterday, the fire department has limited interoperability as far as connectivity to the main dispatch center. Um, after calls, they have to call and get the runtimes and so forth. What this, uh, system will do is it will automate much of that process. So the fire department will have to spend less time administratively going to call. It'll all be integrated together. It'll do much more than that, obviously. It will, it'll, uh, tone out the fire trucks or fire stations. Each fire station will have a compilation of, uh, devices to be able to communicate with the fire services as they go out on calls. It should reduce response times. Uh, it'll do so many things, really hard to kind of go through them. But it is top of the line communication device that makes redundant communication over and over again through multiple devices, whether it be IP, um, communication, Bluetooth communication, LTV, cell service communication. So if any one of those connections are down, it'll just flat fail over to another connection. So it'll never be a time that the dispatch center won't be able to communicate with fire service to make sure they know what resources are needed and what the call is and where that call is at, where people need help. So it seems like a lot of money, but this will be a project that will affect the entire interoperability of the city between the fire department, police department, EMS and several other agencies to be able to get those resources quickly dispatched all the time, every time, without any hiccups or any, any break in communication.
Okay.
Any other questions? And by the way, the second one is, is a similar ordinance. So just to make sure the community knows, these are not two separate systems. This next resolution is actually a finance, uh, resolution that will pay the four sixty-nine. Um, the way this will be set up and budgeted is we've got, the project will be led this year. Uh, we'll sign the contracts depending on the vote. And as that is done, then the project will get started. It'll take about six to eight months to install the project in the various fire departments throughout the community and get all the connectivity made up. We'll do testing toward the end of next year and should go live, hopefully by the, uh, by this time next year, we'd be live. And the first payment would be due in January of twenty twenty-four. So this will be an item that will be plugged into next physical budget year. This will give us plenty of time to plan and get that financing in place. Uh, city manager has already got that laid out. And, uh, and depending on how we look at revenues and how other budgeting takes it, maybe that we don't even need the financing. Maybe that we pay for, um, at the end of the project outright. If we don't, then we've got some breathing room to be able to pay a, a payment, one payment every, uh, year for the next five years. So that's how that would work. We can pay it off at any time without any penalty. So, but the first payment, again, won't even be due until the end of, uh, next year. And then we'll have a one-year warranty period, and then we'll get into some, uh, maintenance. And there was some discussion yesterday about how long, uh, this project would last. This is one of those projects that once you install all the components, it'll be a living, breathing, um, system that will constantly go through upgrades. Every two or three years, we'll be looking at routers and connections. And as the technology improves, we will replace those routers and certainly it'll be at much lower cost. This is the backbone. Once the backbone's been installed, then the, the smaller components like routers and, and other K-Grids, those things will be upgraded software as we go along. So IT will be heavily involved with this, just like they are currently with the radio system. This is actually a component and connected to the radio system. So it's all about communication. It's all about making sure that we get the, uh, the information needed um, that we get from a nine-one-one call out to the first responders and make sure they bring the resources they need, the software or problem they're going to.
Chief, you stayed on yesterday. If we pay it off at the fourth time, would say how much?
Well, I mean, if we, if, if we paid it off over the five years, the total cost of the finance will be about seventy-eight thousand dollars. But just like any other loan, if you pay that off, loan, the, the interest is paid as it goes. So if we pay it off early, we won't pay, uh, as much interest as we pay it off, you know, next year. And then we don't pay any interest. But that's the, the second one is just to plug in that, um, option. So that if we need to, we can spread the payments out. But the worst case scenario, it'd be seventy thousand dollars.
Let me ask you this question. Uh, Fire Chief, uh, Kennedy might be able to answer this. Down on Downing Drive, where we have our little factory, those, uh, companies down there, what the response time from getting from that last fire station down there?
Yeah, what's possible, I'm asking the chief, I think, man. He's talking about responsible down there.
Yeah. I mean, you could take it a minute, as much as five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yes, sir.
That's good.
I mean, that's not that long.
Yeah.
When we go further down the Ridge Road and, um, you know, out in the loop and all of that, that, that's where we're getting into a longer response time.
Uh, okay, thank you. And one other thing, Chief. Uh, getting this, uh, program installed, would it affect the insurance in the City of Phoenix City?
Well, certainly it will help, whatever the insurance rates are.
We know it, it's steady going up, yeah.
Based off an ISO rating, uh, you know, ISO looks at, uh, communication connections, uh, fire apparatus, equipment, personnel on staff. They look at all those kinds of things and make sure that the agency, the fire department, has what it needs to protect the city. And the more resources that we put into the fire department, the more points we get, uh, from ISO. So certainly that, that does go a long way. I mean, anytime that you have multiple ways to communicate with the fire department, that'd give us an extra point. You know, whether it be through an IP or through a Bluetooth connection or through a, a cellphone device or any other device, handheld device, computer devices, fire station devices. Every one of those links are important because that gives us another communication avenue. So if any one of those links fail, then you've got another link that you can make sure that you get that information to, to first responders to make that connection.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Let me ask you something, Chief. This system that you put in, does it just make us communicate amongst ourselves better or we get connected with other?
That's a good question. You know, P twenty-five, the radio system, Project Twenty-five is a, is a project that was developed back in the early nineties directly as a response to the nine-eleven attacks. And what that, what that did is it made all the IP communications and radio communications, as well as communications with fire departments standardized. So if we needed to add, uh, mutual aid, for example, those are, those are things that are connected to this kind of radio system. So, yeah, it does make the interoperability, whether we're talking to a VHF channel, that's the volunteer fire department in the county, or we're talking to Columbus, which is also a P twenty-five network, we can build those connections. And, and, uh, we can have as many or as few as we need. Um, but, yeah, those resources, that's part of the reason that the technology's got to the point now that there's so many different ways to link those communications, whether we can do it locally or whether you do it with agencies that surround you, or even other assets, federal assets that may come in. They'll, they'll bring equipment. If it's P twenty-five compatible, we can put those, uh, radios into our system and be able to just continue on with those additional resources.
So that gives us the option to, to choose to do that at times?
But part of that, I think, part of what you want to know is, um, tell them what our reach is. What our system, do we already have in place?
Well, Rich, uh, the system we already have in place, it's a state wide, really. I mean, even though we have two, two area in the county, those two handles cover locally. But those, those handles are actually connected to a way they call a core. The core is actually located in Birmingham. And that Birmingham, for them, pushes out to all other radio systems that are similar to all of the P twenty-five compatible. So when we travel from here to Baldwin County to Mobile, about seventy-five to eighty percent of the state is covered by some sort of P twenty-five system that we're connected to. So if anytime that we need for, for example, we can deploy resources from Phoenix City to a disaster area in Mobile or Baldwin County if there was a hurricane, for example. And we've done this in the past where there was tornadoes up in Muscalusa, where we go up there. Well, Muscalusa has a P twenty-five system. So when those resources deployed, then, and same thing with us. If we have a system or issued here, we can call those agencies and when they send the resources to us, all we've got to do is plug in their cellphone, their radio, basically, is how it works. They're, and they're able to respond and help recover from that disaster. So it's not, we're not an island anymore. I mean, that's one of the problems that we've always looked at is that certainly in a major disaster, we can handle things day to day, but in major disasters, all resources will get overwhelmed.
Need help.
Need help.
So that's when other agencies will come in, and they, and that's always been the strong point about any public safety agency. I mean, we're, we're willing and ready to go wherever that need may be, doesn't, it's not just Phoenix City. So we're always training for that eventual outcome. You know, even though we don't do it maybe once every four or five years, when it happens, it's one of those that you've just got to be ready, and you've got to have all that technology in place to make it work.
Well, it's all about response time and, and being, you know, very quick and right on, you know, right up front. And we get more catastrophes, it seems like nowadays, that affect, you know, certain areas of the country or, or several areas at the same time. Uh, luckily, we don't have the wildfires, but you could imagine if you'd had the wildfires like they had in the Smokies a few years ago and they have out in, in the West. If we had that around here, that would just be, I mean, I can't even imagine the amount of people that it takes to try to control something like that when it's going on in multiple cities and, and national and state parks at the same time, and how many people have to communicate with each other to know where everybody is at? I mean, that's, that, I can't even, I can't even fathom that. I mean, that's just beyond my belief.
Trying to communicate on a single channel, you know, we could run over each other.
You will never get anything done.
It's not possible, so what you do is you break them up into working groups or teams, and then each team has its own channel to work on, and of course, the command monitors all five of those channels. It's a, it's a very regimented, um, system and, and, uh, command and control, but without that kind of technology to be able to manage that, you know, it'd just be overwhelming for any one person to do. So you've got to have that operational span of control that this technology will bring to, to the table.
Let me ask you something else. How does that affect a volunteer fire department like La Dona in Fort Meach?
Well, again, volunteer fire departments are independent on agencies on their own. Um, certainly when they call us for Mutual Aid, we bring those resources to them to help them respond to whatever situation they have. So that's really, it's, it makes us a better and, uh, more efficient partner for them.
Can they als, they also receive that information when they come through our system?
They won't see the, the bells and whistles that we'll have.
Yeah.
We'll be able to talk to them on their DHA radio. We can pass it on their DHA radio, talk to them, tell them what they need the resources for. And when we get there, you know, prisoner, patients, or so, the command post, and then they'll bring out, they'll have it on the scene there to be able to, to direct traffic and direct resources on the scene. But, you know, each, each, the agency's gonna have to address that on their own. See, basically, again, because Phoenix City is the primary paid professional law, um, fire department in the county, certainly those can, or those independent agencies will certainly lean on us to help, you know, respond to those emergency. And that's what we plan on doing, is making sure that we're available and, and willing to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief. You ate two bowls of Wheaties this morning. Real good. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? If not at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, counsel proceeding on, on the Police Department, Chief County alluded to this, is a resolution in reference to authorizing the Mayor, City Manager, and Chief of Police, Public Safety Director, to enter into a lease agreement with Motorola Solutions to finance a Mark Alert Fire Station Alerting and Automation System for the Fire Department in an amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and Motorola Solutions desire to enter into a lease agreement to finance a Mark Alert Fire Station Alerting and Automation System for the Fire Department. And whereas the lease agreement will finance four-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-eighty dollars, twenty-five cents under the following terms. Five-year lease agreement with the first payment due January the first, twenty-twenty-four in the amount of one-hundred-nine-thousand-four-hundred-forty-nine dollars, forty-nine cent, and then one-hundred-nine-thousand-four-hundred-forty-nine dollars, forty-nine cent for the next four years for a total lease payment with interest of five-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-forty-seven dollars, forty-five cent. The lease agreement can be repaid early without penalty. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the Mayor and City Manager as authorizing officials and Raymond J. Smith as Chief of Police Public Safety Director are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the lease agreement with Motorola Solutions. Passed, approved, and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilwoman Warman Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments, questions, or discussion?
I would like to say this, if you notice, the chief did say that, uh, we don't just pull things out of the air, as this counsel and myself has always stated, we always have a strategic plan. This is a budgeted item that will go into effect next year for twenty-twenty-four. Uh, as he stated, if it's paid off early, you don't pay all that interest back, uh, but again, it's strategically systematic plan to have this budgeted, which we are, we are, we will have it budgeted correctly.
That's correct.
So it's not something we just pull out there because it is a high-dollar item, something well-needed, but we do have a plan to make sure we have the funds to do it, which we do have the funds to do it.
Yeah, we do.
Okay? With that said, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, on the Utilities Department, is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the Mayor and City Manager to sign an indemnification agreement with the Phoenix City Board of Education regarding a sanitary sewer main. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, operates a wastewater collection, WWC, system, and whereas the city proposes to install a gravity sanitary sewer main for their Saddle Brook Gravity Sanitary Sewer Project across Phoenix City Board of Education PCBOE property. And whereas the PCBOE wishes to be indemnified for said Saddle Brook Gravity Sanitary Sewer Project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the Mayor and City Manager to sign the necessary documents for the indemnification agreement.
I miss you.
I know, me too. For the PCBOE, passed, approved, and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. We have some tongue twisters now, that happens. Counsel, we have all heard the, uh, resolution from, uh, clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, counsel, on the Utilities Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to accept a proposal from Thompson Insurance Incorporated for property, auto, and liability insurance for calendar year twenty-twenty-three in an amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of property, auto, and liability insurance, excuse me, for its utility department. And whereas the Utilities Department was approved under Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one-dash-one-ninety-one to accept Thompson Insurance Incorporated for property, auto, and liability insurance coverage for the calendar years of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four. And whereas the city has received a proposal for property, auto, and liability insurance for the Utilities Department from Thompson Insurance Incorporated for the needed coverage for calendar year twenty-twenty-three in the amount of two-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-nine dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby accepts the proposal for property, auto, and liability insurance for the Utilities Department provided from Thompson Insurance Incorporated for the calendar year twenty-twenty-three at a cost of two-hundred-sixty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-nine dollars and authorizes the Mayor and City Manager to sign the attached proposal. Passed, approved, and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the counsel for a motion, please. May I have?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor, could we get, um, Mr. Woody to elaborate on why we're citizen here in Phoenix City? Uh, Mr. Woody, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I look at all of your names, is all that, those name a cover on this particular insurance?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And, and all the vehicle that you got?
Yes, sir.
Well, how that affect the city insurance? They, they?
That is, that is part of the city insurance.
Well, I thought it was independent, yeah, I know it's part of the city, but I thought...
The city, the city is in control of, um, utility. City, we're not more set up, you know, like most cities, you know, where they have a board and whatever. That's ran through you.
Okay.
Through, through us.
I was just wondering.
Yes, sir, it's just a utility, the utility in the City of Phoenix City is a department, just like other departments.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's different than the general fund. General fund takes care of the rest, uh, the city and its departments, and the utilities and this particular proposal take care of the utilities, and it's in that department. It's two different budgets. Yes, yes.
Okay. Yes, sir, I understand now. It's also a cover all of your pumps here, I'm looking at all that stuff.
That's correct. This is a budget that I am reviewing, this is something that we pursue every year.
Okay. Good deal, good deal.
All right.
I guess that's all of my questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other comments? If not at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Mayor, um, Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It happens.
Happening a lot.
Yeah, but that, that, it happens. It's like that some days. Proceeding on, counsel, on the ordinance, we have a public hearing in second reading. It's an ordinance to amend these three-point-nine-five acres of land lying in Section Five Township seventeen north, range thirty east, Russell County, Alabama, into a C-four zone highway commercial located at thirty-seven forty-three, Highway four thirty-one north, two-eighty Phoenix LLC by Sri Seem owner. The first reading was on the eleventh of, uh, of, uh, last month, on the fifteenth of last month. I will not ask the clerk to reread this ordinance, but now at this time, I would like to open it up and ask if there's anyone that would like to come and address this counsel in reference to the, uh, three-point-nine-five acres of land lying in Section, uh, five to be able to go to C-four zone. If there's anyone that would like to address counsel in reference to that, now is the time to do so. Since no one is stepping forward, I am declaring this public hearing closed, and at this time, I'd like to ask for a, uh, motion from the counsel. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Warman Johnson. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, counsel, on the first reading, is an ordinance to amend ordinance number two-sixteen dash fifteen of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, relating to permit, permit fees. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-sixteen dash fifteen of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, relating to permit fees. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the ordinance relating to permit fees is hereby amended as follows. Section one, permit fees. Total valuation, one thousand dollars unless, no fee unless inspection required, in which case a twenty-five dollar fee for each inspection will be charged. One thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, six dollars for each additional thousand or fraction thereof, to and include fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars, three hundred twenty dollars for the first fifty thousand, plus five dollars for each additional thousand a fraction thereof, to and including one hundred thousand dollars. One hundred thousand dollars to one million dollars, five hundred seventy dollars for the first one hundred thousand dollars, plus four dollars for each additional thousand or fraction thereof, to and including one million dollars. One million dollars and up, four thousand one hundred seventy dollars for the first one million dollars, plus three dollars for each additional thousand or fraction thereof. Construction industry craft training fees. As required per Act twenty-fifteen dash three oh eight of the Alabama Legislature, there shall be a fee of one dollar for every one thousand dollars for the issuance of non-residential construction building permits effective October the first, twenty-sixteen. Moving fee. For the moving of any building or structure, the fee shall be one hundred dollars. Demolition fee. For the demolition of any building or structure, the fee shall be seventy-five dollars. Swimming pool will be based on valuation. Plan checking fee. When the valuation of the proposed construction exceeds one thousand dollars and a plan is required to be submitted, a plan checking fee shall be paid to the building official at the time of submitting plans and specifications for checking. Said plan checking fee shall be equal to one-half of the building permit fee. Such plan checking fee is in addition to the building permit fee. Excuse me. Building permit valuation. The building official shall, shall use the square foot building valuation data updated periodically by the International Code Council Incorporated to determine permit valuations. Other cost-based methods may be used as necessary to determine valuation. The valuation of a one-in-two-family dwelling shall be calculated per every square foot of floor area based on an equal value of, up equal to fifty percent of the current ICC building valuation data for residential wood frame construction. The valuation of a commercial structure shall be calculated based on the square foot construction cost per ICC building valuation data. Electrical permit fees. Issuance fee, fifteen dollars. Temp pole, ten dollars. Test power, ten dollars. Additional wiring, fifteen dollars. Lighted signs, ten dollars. Main service. Two hundred amps or less, fifteen dollars. Two hundred and one to four hundred amps, twenty dollars. Four hundred and one to six hundred amps, twenty-five dollars. Six hundred and one to eight hundred amps, forty-five dollars. Eight hundred and one to one thousand amps, fifty-five dollars. One thousand and one amps and above, plus one doll, is seventy-five dollars, plus one dollar for each additional hundred or fraction thereof. Motors. Fractional to five horsepower, fifteen dollars. Greater than five horsepower, fifteen dollars, plus one dollar per, per horsepower. Gas permit fees. Gas permit fees. For issuing each permit, fifteen dollars. The total fees for inspection of consumers' gas piping at one location, including both rough and final inspection, one to four outlets, ten dollars. Each additional, one dollar. The fees for inspecting conversion burners, floor furnaces, incinerators, boilers, or central heating or air conditioning units, five dollars. Each additional, one dollar. The fee for inspecting vented wall furnaces and water heaters, two dollars fifty cent. Mechanical permit fees. Mechanical work other than gas piping systems. Initial fee for issuing the permit, fifteen dollars. Additional fees. Fee for inspecting heating, ventilating, ductwork, air conditioning and refrigeration systems shall be ten dollars for the first one thousand dollars or fraction thereof. A valuation of the installation plus three dollars for each additional one thousand dollars or fraction thereof. Fee for inspecting repairs, alterations and additions to an existing system shall be five dollars plus three dollars for each one thousand dollars or fraction thereof. Fee for inspecting boilers based upon BTU. Thirty-three thousand BTU, one BHP to one hundred sixty-five thousand five BHP, five dollars. One hundred sixty-five thousand and one BTU, five BHP to three hundred and thirty thousand ten BHP, ten dollars. Three hundred and thirty thousand one BTU, ten BHP to one million one hundred sixty-five thousand fifty-two BHP, fifteen dollars. One million one hundred sixty-five thousand and one BTU, fifty-two BHP to three million three hundred thousand ninety-eight BHP, twenty-five dollars. Over three million three hundred thousand BTU, thirty-five dollars. Self-contained units less than two tons and all buildings except one and two family dwellings where self-contained air conditioner units of less than two tons are to be installed, the fee charged shall be that of the total cost of all units combined. Plumbing permit fees. For issuing each permit, fifteen dollars. For each plumbing fixture, floor drain or trap, including water and drainage piping, three dollars. For each house building sewer, ten dollars. For each house sewer having to be replaced or repaired, ten dollars. For each cesspool where permitted, ten dollars. For each septic tank, seepage pit or drain field, ten dollars. For each water heater and/or vent, three dollars. For installation, alteration or repair of water piping and/or water treating equipment, ten dollars. For repair, alteration of drainage or vent pipe, five dollars. For vacuum breakers or backflow protective devices installed subsequent to installation of the piping or equivalent served, one to five, three dollars over five, a dollar fifty. Certificate of occupancy. For the issuing a certificate of occupancy, twenty-five dollars. Reinspection fees. A contractor or individual will be allowed one inspection and one reinspection of the same phase of work under the permit issued. The third inspection of the same phase or stage of work shall be thirty-five dollars. All additional inspections for the same phase or stage of work shall be one hundred dollars. If an inspection is requested and access is not available, a reinspection fee will be charged. Failure to cancel a scheduled inspection when the project is not ready for inspection constitutes an inspection. Refunds. The building official shall authorize the refunding of fees as follows. The full amount of any fee paid herein that was erroneously paid or collected shall be refunded. If no inspections were performed, the full amount of any building permit fee paid less a twenty-five dollar administrative fee shall be returned, refunded. The building official shall not authorize the refunding of any fee paid except upon written request filed no later than sixty days after the date of payment. Section two. Where work for such a permit is required by the codes is started or proceeded prior to obtaining said permit, the fees herein specified shall be doubled, but the payment of such double fee shall not relieve any persons from fully complying with the requirements of the code in the execution of the work nor from any other penalties prescribed herein. A copy of the permit must be posted at the approved location of work and in all fees shall be paid by the person to whom the permit is issued. Section three. Be it ordained that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after March the first, twenty twenty-three. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith be and the same or hereby repealed, passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Catch your breath and drink some water.
Yeah, that was a long one.
Yeah. Catch your breath. Okay, uh, council? We have all heard the, uh, reading of the ordinance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second? Second, Councilman Gordy. All right.
Can I ask a question? Sure. On the first page on the total evaluations, should not that do just like it did through the rest of it where it says like a thousand dollars and less and next time it says a thousand and fifty thousand? Shouldn't that say a thousand and one? Cause you're gonna have the same thousand dollars listed on the first and the second and then when you get to the fifty thousand, it does it again.
Kind of go up one dollar.
All the way down and where we did the other stuff, when you got to the BTUs and everything, you just increased it by a one to where you didn't have the same.
Yeah, it, it, it.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just asking, should, should we not?
It may should, but if, if it's over a thousand dollars, then it's six dollars for additional.
Right. Cause that thousand fall in both, the fifty thousand fall in both, the hundred and so forth, is what I'm saying. That's why I was just looking at it that way.
So we had, had an increase since what, two thousand and four, two thousand and five?
Yes, sir, it was two thousand and five. We, we had an increase.
So this is justified then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Mr. Day. Thanks. Mr. Rogers. Any other comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, we have a public notice in first reading. It's a letter of request from planning commission, public notice and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. Article two definitions, section three dash use, use definition and article four general dis, district regulation, section six notes to tables, table four dash one dimensional requirements for residential districts in R two and R three patio garden, minimum depth of side yard. At this time, uh, council, I will, uh, ask the clerk, uh, to read the letter and if it's the pleasure of the council, we will, uh, accept the letter, uh, ask for one reading and also approval of the public notice and to place this ordinance on first reading if we can take all that together. Okay? All minds are clear on that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, letter dated December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two to mayor and city council members regarding text amendment side yard setback. The planning commission of the city of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to consider the text amendment of the Phoenix City zoning ordinance. The planning commission held the public hearing and made the motion to recommend approval of the text amendment to the city council. This text amendment is in reference to the side yard setback requirements in the R two and R three zoning districts in regard to patio homes. Signed by, uh, Simon, excuse me, signed by Vice Chairman and Planning Commission Tony Taylor and Secretary Eliza Phillips. Um, the public notice and ordinance read as follows. Public notice. Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to a request made by the planning commission of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the seventh day of February, twenty twenty-three at nine AM Eastern Standard Time at the Martin Ida Lower Park Community Center located at thirty-seven forty-three Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. Article two definitions, section three use def, use definitions and article four general district regulations, section six notes to tables, table four dash one dimensional requirements for residential districts in R two and R three patio garden, minimum depth of side yard. Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that article two definition, section three use definitions and article four general district regulations, section six notes to tables, table four dash one dimensional requirements for residential districts in R two and R three patio garden, minimum depth of side yard. The zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and two, amended the second day of October, two thousand and seven, amended the fifteenth day of May, twenty twen, twenty twelve, and amended the fifteenth day of July, twenty fourteen, is hereby amended as per attached. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Be it further ordained that all laws or parts of laws in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. If any part of this ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional, such declaration shall not affect the parts which remain. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard concerning the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance may appear before the council at the aforementioned time and place to be heard, passed, approved and adopted this the twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we have all heard the reading of the public notice in the ordinance. At this time, council, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the letter, to approve the public notice as well as to place on first reading. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second, to accept all three.
A second from Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, any comments or discussion?
Yes, sir. Could we get, uh, uh, I remember something about that text amendment, how that, uh, just get somebody elaborate on that for the city of Phoenix City? And also the district in R two, the patio, uh, garden, home setback.
Yes, sir. This is a, um, proposed amendment to our zoning ordinance and, and the zoning ordinance is a document that should be amended as, um, problems arise that the city can take care of or issues come up, um, or new uses developed that we need to amend the zoning ordinance to reflect on this one element of the community. This, um, particular zoning amendment is addressing an issue that city staff has had with drainage of some of our residential developments that are taking place under our patio home, uh, development standards. Uh, right now, we have a four-foot side door setback that's allowed on our patio home in the R two and R three zoning districts, which is not really giving enough room between the two residential structures to allow the drainage, which is having a detrimental effect to some of the residences in this, um, these subdivisions. So the staff has recommended that we increase the side door setback under the patio home option in the R two and R three zoning districts from that four foot to a seven foot. Currently, a, a traditional single family residential, uh, structure had a ten-foot side door setback. So this is still allowing, um, less of a side door setback, but it does help with the drainage issue. So that is why this proposed text amendment is being placed, uh, before city council.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask something? This doesn't affect any of the subdivisions that's already started, it's already being done, say like phase one or phase two or phase three that's under the four foot one. They get to continue at the four foot or does it change them in midstream on a part that's already, like, like phase one or phase two that's already been started?
Any development that's already gotten approval, um, operates under the, the requirements that they had when the ordinance was in, in, in place. This will take effect if the city council holds a public hearing and approves the change amendment. That's when moving forward, they'll have to meet these new guidelines.
Well, this is approval that we need, I mean, we need to really be serious about in my, in my opinion because there are so many issues in neighborhoods now from what is being done, but I would not want to, you know, like, that's why I was asking that, I wouldn't want to tell someone they can't finish what they started. That would be, you know, what's coming from.
I want to make sure everybody understands.
Thank you, you want a cup of soda? We can make sure so everyone will understand.
Cause this is something that's very important, yes.
Right, just to clarify, so like that situation that we have somewhere in your phase three, if the development comes along and they, their preliminary plat expires based off of those old regulations, then these new regulations will apply.
Correct.
So that's why we want to make sure that everyone is continuing on with their development because anything that does come hap, that does come along, if your preliminary plat expires, then you're, you've got to follow the new, uh, regulations.
Right, that, that's what I wanted to make sure, cause I normally get asked that by some of them, I, we all are. And I know that some of them are gonna say, well, I've already started, but phase one, phase two and phase three could have already been started and they finished it up. Phase four, that has not been started, never been approved, it's got to follow up another brand new ones. So that's what I'm saying and, and that's only fair. Cause anybody from that point forward that comes out with something brand new that didn't even have something, a phase one, phase two or phase three already started, has got to follow the new guidelines. So the old should have to follow too, as long as they haven't already been approved on the previous, is what you're saying, correct?
Let's make sure we get this right then, because what you're saying, you gotta make sure these merge, just because it's been approved.
Has to be started too, though.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, cause you still gotta have a time on that because when that expiration date gets.
Expires.
You can have part of that if you've been approved, but that expiration date hit your new property and then make sure people understand that, that that's gonna.
And you gotta be, I would say you gotta be completed the whole, the whole nine yards, you know, the way you don't fall in, cause you can't keep, you know, just doing phase one in sections. You can't have phase one of phase one and phase two of phase one and you just keep on rolling phase one along. You can't do that, you're right.
But it could be within that same subdivision.
Correct.
That's the change, that's what I'm gonna make.
Yeah, exactly.
So we get, just because that subdivision is sitting there and you've done part of it, doesn't mean you get to continue that after that date.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
To a date, you go through the new regulation.
The time is a factor in there.
That's what, it's, it's critical, okay.
And those times are set out in the subdivision regulations. It's very clear now, once we made that update, how many extensions you get and once that the last extension, that date's over, then your preliminary plat expires, then after that, you gotta go through the whole process again and then follow all the new regulations.
Well, this should only be that way, cause anybody that's starting fresh and new right then has to do it that way.
That's correct.
That's only fair, yeah.
Ms. Angel, how many extensions are allowed currently?
Miss Johnson, I believe it's two point four month time extensions. I wouldn't need to go back and look, I haven't looked.
I think it's two, oh, yeah.
Two.
It's two, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I mean, that's four years, you can't believe it, that's plenty of time.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Haddaway. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, on the public notice and first reading is a letter of request from planning commission, public notice and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. Article two definitions, section three use des, use definitions, add medical cannabis dispensary in article four general district regulations, section six notes to tables, tables four dash five, use regulation and medical cannabis dispensaries in C four zone in article six regulation applying to all or several districts, add section twenty-one dash medical cannabis dispensaries, add number one. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, letter dat, dated December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two from the planning commission to mayor and city council members regarding a text amendment, medical cannabis dispensary. The planning commission of the city of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to consider the text amendment of the Phoenix City zoning ordinance. The planning commission held the public hearing and made the motion to recommend approval of the text amendment to the city council. This text amendment is in reference to location of medical cannabis dispensaries in the city limits. It's signed by planning commission vice chairman Tony Taylor, Eliza Phillips secretary. The public notice and the ordinance read as follows. Public notice. Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to requests made by the planning commission of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the seventh day of February, twenty twenty-three at nine AM Eastern Standard Time at the Martin Ida Lower Park Community Center located at thirty-seven forty-three Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama. Article two definitions, section three use definitions, add medical cannabis dispensary and article four general district regulations, section six notes to tables, table four dash five use regulations, add medical cannabis dispensary in C four zone and article six regulations applying to all or several districts, add section twenty-one medical cannabis dispensary, add number one. Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, that article two definitions, section three use definitions, add medical cannabis dispensary and article four general district regulations, section six notes to tables, table four dash five use regulations, add medical cannabis dispensary in a C four zone and article six regulations applying to all or several districts, add section twenty-one medical cannabis dispensary, add number one of the zoning ordinance of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and two, amended the second day of October, two thousand and seven, amended the fifteenth day of May, twenty twelve, and amended the fifteenth day of July, twenty fourteen, is hereby amended as per attached. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Be it further ordained that all laws or parts of laws in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. If any part of this ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional, such declaration shall not affect the parts which remain. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard concerning the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance may appear before the council at the aforementioned time and place to be heard, passed, approved and adopted this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Get you another drink of water.
I need that.
Thank you. Council, we have all heard the reading of the letter, the public notice and the ordinance. At this time, I would like to call for a motion to accept the letter, to approve the public notice as well as to place on first reading. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Okay. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. And now, council proceeding on on board appointments. We do have an, uh, one opening for the tree, uh, commission. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any nominations, nominees, any nominations. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any nominations, nominees, any nominations. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Rick Sanders to fill the position being vacated by Ms. Gail Bradley. Okay. We have a nomination from Councilman Bailey. At this time, I am declaring this nomination closed. And at this time, council, I'd like to ask the council for a motion to appoint Rick Sanders on the tree commission board. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion by Councilman Day?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordy. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, counsel, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Chad Gamble. Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mayor. The city received a claim from Bria Ward on December the seventh, twenty twenty-two. This one, Ward claims that, fly by night twelve, street of Phoenix City. Before dark, she hit a pothole, and as a result, her radiator is cracked. This Ward, uh, did present three estimates for the repair. Based on information that we received from the utilities department and Mr. Woody, the city did not have noticed of this defect in the road on the day of the claim, the day of the incident, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, I recommend that the claim be denied.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve that recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Thank you all so much, counsel, everyone. All the employees, the department head, and everyone that's here, and everyone watching on CTV Bean. With that said, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anything that a council member would like to say before I wind it up with our city manager? Moore? I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody in the community. Please remember what the season is for. Think about the ones around you that need some help. There's still people out there, and there's still time before we celebrate ourselves. As the mayor always says, put others before you put yourself. Think about others before you think of yourself. We're all blessed in this room with more than we'll ever need, more than we have need for. A lot of people out there don't. So try to do something special between that and Sunday for someone, even if it's just a thank you. Doesn't have to be monetary. It can just be some help. Or just call them up, tell them thank you for something they've done for you over the past year or at some point in time in your life. Try to keep everybody safe during this season. Bundle up Friday, Saturday, because it's going to be cold. And think about the new year to come and how blessed we are to have almost gotten through this year. And the new year to come, may it bring all of us joy and laughter and happiness and more fulfillment than we've ever had in the past. So thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes. I concur with what Councilmember Bay had already spoken of. Well, we must remember the reason for the season. You know that Jesus is the reason for the season. Let us not forget that. And I'd like to say to all the citizens in Phoenix City and throughout the state or everywhere else, be careful, enjoy your family, and be safe out there. One other thing I want to bring a hat to, I had the opportunity to, uh, visit the Mother Mayor Mission ribbon cutting ceremony on last Friday. And I was very impressed, uh, we had a good time down there with the Women's Veterans Association, and they had folks from Tuskegee and everywhere. I was very impressed with the, uh, with the program they had put together down there. And this is something that we do need here in, uh, in our area, and, uh, the Women, uh, Veteran Association, uh, homeless women, uh, I didn't know that. I also learned that it's a hundred mile radius. You do not have a Women's Veteran Association or, uh, in a hundred mile radius. So I was very impressed with the things that I learned down there, and I enjoy meaning something to veterans down there. Uh, my last statement would be to Captain Joey for his willingness to serve Phoenix City and citizens of Phoenix City, going away from his family for, what, approximately ten weeks? And I'd like to ask you this question. Did you have the opportunity to call home, uh, visit home during those ten weeks?
We did. We did. I had one long vacation in the three-day weekend we had.
My hat's off to you for your willingness to do that for the citizens, the family, and for yourself and citizens of Phoenix City. Thank you for that. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mayor, I would like to say, um, it is an exciting time here in positively Phoenix City. And it's definitely an exciting time this time of the year with the Christmas holiday season, uh, fastly approaching. And to, uh, end twenty twenty-two out, we've, um, faced head-on a lot of challenges and a lot of opportunities right here in Phoenix City. A lot of people continue to give back, and, um, like Councilmember Bailey, um, Day stated, giving back, um, to our citizens. I did also have the opportunity to, um, be a part of the, um, ribbon cutting ceremony down at Mother Mayor Mission. So again, a lot of people in our community continue to give back, and that is so, so important. Um, about a couple of weeks ago, the alumni of Central, um, class of eighty-five had a, uh, a class social, and a longtime educator came to bring greetings. So I want to thank her personally for coming out. Mrs. Reverend Jackie Hayder came out, um, as we celebrated, um, a class function out in Fort Benin, Uche Creek Reservation. So thank her for her, um, continued support in the community. Phoenix City continue to have, uh, great educators and, uh, produce great people, uh, from that school. And I'm proud to say that as an alumni of Central High. But when people came back to Phoenix City, some of my classmates, they made this statement, and I'll make a short quote. He said, "Tell your mayor to keep doing the great work. You are the leaders. You, you leaders are just what Phoenix City need." And that's a quote by one of the alumnis of, uh, class of eighty-five. And, you know, so once again, people continue to come back and visit, uh, where they once lived and grew up and was real right here in Phoenix City, and they see the exciting things that are happening in Phoenix City. And that's notably because of you, the citizens. So I just want to thank the citizens, um, for, you know, being residing in Phoenix City, uh, spending your tax dollars in Phoenix City, because that's what it's all about. To the city manager, thank you for your staff. You know, people talking about the park that recently opened on fourteenth. Um, and, and those, those children, the young adults and, uh, just citizens in general are ready to visit the park for some exciting time. So we're adding to our list of parks and recreational, um, outings that we have right here in Phoenix City. And to all of, uh, the citizens in Phoenix City, uh, we just want to wish you a Merry Christmas. We, uh, wish, um, you the, uh, the, the gift of faith and, uh, the blessing of hope and the peace of love right here in Phoenix City. So again, I say Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo everyone's sentiments, you know. Um, enjoy this time that we have with our family and our friends and our loved ones, and just have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mr. Hunter?
Yes, sir. Thank you all. I'd like to thank God for letting me see the twelfth month of another year. Uh, and all, all of us that are here with one another. I'd like to thank this council, the city clerk's office, our attorney's office, all our department head, workers, and our four hundred plus, five hundred positions of employees that work for us, first of all. I'd like to do that and really dearly thank you all. Um, another thing I don't want us to forget, that it's been two years since our Assistant Chief, Gail Green, passed. And, um, that's something that we planned on when we opened up our new building. Um, also Captain Campbell, let's not forget him. He had COVID, and it basically took away his career. And Steve Smith, who worked with us real close, you know, we don't want to forget about their families or forget about them. You know, we're real close with them. And for me, it tore apart a lot of things with succession planning, because I can't tell you, you know, God has a plan. I, I can have all the plans I want, but God has a different plan. You know, the chief has been promoted to public safety director. Uh, at the same time, Gail Green would have been the chief of the police department if she was still there. Captain Campbell had the opportunity to move to another position too, and we've changed. But things like, um, what Assistant Chief is doing right now, and getting kind of spoken, thinking about all these things, you know, think about people. I've seen everybody here come through the door. Every last person was here. And, uh, Chief Stalager has done a great job. We can look with God, he's done with us with, with, with Joey, with Captain Joey. And the things are moving, and people are doing well and doing good with a lot of things. But remember, it's, it's one thing that we, we deal with a lot. The week of Christmas until the first of the year has been notoriously critical on our citizens throughout the world. But you all know that's the time that you have the most heart attacks and death of heart attacks throughout every year, between the week of Christmas and the first. So controlling emotions and trying to look out for each other and enjoying family and thinking about past family and loved ones. Try to handle that as best as you can, because it brings, it, it can affect you a whole lot. And a lot of people don't realize that. And, um, our city is moving forward and is doing great. And, um, y'all have done a wonderful job, because this is the last meeting of this particular year. And like I say, all I can do is say thank you, everybody, for the wonderful jobs they're doing.
Just to concur with everyone else I said, um, it's the time of year to reflect, as you've heard me say several times and will continue to hear me say. Uh, but I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, uh, this entire community. And one of the things that, uh, we always speak about is what our fiduciary responsibility is. And that is to make sure, um, people in this community can continue to have a quality of life. And that's our mission. And what I want to challenge everyone is, let's not miss the mission of being collectively involved in doing that. It's just not this council, it's just not this city manager, or the department head, or the workers, it's the entire community. So with that, Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mayor, um, I'd like to sit here and think about what we've been through. I've been on this council nine years. And as I told Mr. Hunter, I observed a lot of things. And, uh, one thing that impressed me most of all, I said before, the department head worked together, I liked that, as a team. And, uh, Mr. Hunter had put some things in place that make this council look good. We haven't got any intro, of course. I know one thing I've been hoping to do, I called Mr. Hunter to get some advice, which I knew he knew, because he had been around here a long time. As I often say about Mr. Hunter, he's done a fantastic job. And one thing about him, he got the attitude with all the department heads. He gave them the opportunity to do their job. I liked that, and city manager. And I'd say to you, Mr. Hunter, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, again, Merry Christmas to everyone. It's the time of year to be, be excited, to be jolly, and be even more friendlier, and to think of others. So with that said, we'd like to thank CTV Bean for bringing this, and Merry Christmas, and hope everyone have a Happy New Year. May God continue to bless all of us individually, as well as collectively, and bless the city. Merry Christmas to everyone, and we do stand adjourned.
Merry Christmas.